Good evening, this is a public meeting of the Lowell zoning Board of Appeals for March 13th, 2017. If everyone could check their electronic device, make sure it's turned off please. And if there's anyone here that wants to speak on behalf of any of the petitions, if you could sign in at the podium before addressing the board. First matter before us is under continuances, this is ZB 2017-7, the petitions of variance. The applicant is M&W Real Estate LLC, its property is located at 153 Westford Street. And the petitioner is seeking relief from the zoning Board of Appeals under Section 5.1 Dimensional Regulations of the Lowell zoning ordinance. And any relief that is required, the subject property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. Good evening, sir, how are you? Very good, is the green light on?
No, oh yeah, no, that's better. Alright, hi, good evening. I am here on behalf of, my name is Willie, first of all Willie Metz. And I am here on behalf of M&W Real Estate LLC. And I am here to get the special permit for 153 Westford Street. Which has been used as the four-family dwelling for over 20 years. And has been the city tax card reflected that the property was taxed as a four-family dwelling. And even though permits had been pulled for over 20 years to create the multiple unit occupancy. Permits were never issued for the four-family dwelling. It is my understanding that Christopher McWhite, the local inspector. He supports the continued, the continued use as a four-family dwelling. And as always, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions regarding my intent and use of this property. And sorry, I'm just a little nervous right here in front of you guys.
It's okay. You've been before the planning board already, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Now, your first name was Willie?
Yeah, Willie Metz.
What's the?
Metz, M-E-T-Z, Willie Metz.
M-E-T-Z, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So you're Mr. Metz?
Yes.
And this is Mr. Tavarez?
Yes, Mr. Tavarez, yes, so they're left of me.
Okay. Good. Alright. So, you gentlemen purchased the property, what was it, October or November?
It was in August.
August?
Yeah, 2016.
Okay, and I did see the planning board meeting, and I understand the history behind how the city treated the property. But what the actual use was based on their research. So, you're here this evening for quite a few variances. I know the dimensional requirements, because the use is changing, has kind of forced you into this dimensional requirement issue. We can, we can get into that later, but you're also here for the parking variance, correct?
Correct.
And we did receive, we have the plot plan where you're showing the proposed parking, correct?
Correct.
Now, on the proposed parking, if I'm reading this correctly, this is what I'm referring to here.
Okay.
Is this, this is the only document we have that shows the parking, correct? Yeah. This shows, I would say, it shows six spots, there looks like a seventh that's kind of carved out at the corner, which probably doesn't meet the requirements. Then you have one parking spot, it says in the garage, but I know at planning board, there was a discussion regarding how you can even access the door that's currently in the garage, correct?
Correct, yeah, and he had mentioned that we should take the garage down. If there was no proper use to it, because it is a little bit, it's coming down a little bit. And we actually thought that was a great idea, and we want to go forward taking the garage down to even make more space for parking if.
Okay, well that's, don't take it the wrong way, that's good to hear, because that was one of the questions I was gonna have based on the meeting. I wasn't sure what you gentlemen were thinking about with the garage. I had questions about the use for the garage.
Yeah.
If you weren't gonna take it down, so. I won't get too far into it, because I want to give the board members a chance. Is there anything else you'd like to add, at least at this point?
Um, no.
Okay, alright, thank you, Mr. Metz.
You're welcome.
Alright, gonna open it up to the public, anyone here like to speak in favor of this petition, in favor, in favor? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed, anyone like to speak in opposition? Opposition, opposition. Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed, I'd like to open it up to the board, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the applicant. My concerns were with regards to the garage and the parking situation. And what the use for that garage is gonna be with one parking spot available, and what other you would use it for.
We was gonna make it a two-car garage for two to go in through there. But it's like coming down a little bit, because it's been there for so long, and nobody has kept up with it. So, we was willing just to bring it down and make more parking in that area, so it'll be a lot more space.
Okay, so that is actually your plan?
So yes, that's gonna be the plan, yeah, we thought about it, it was like, you know what, they are right, it's.
Okay, did you happen to review the comments that were provided by the city? I think one of the mentions with regards to the parking also was providing for landscaping to block out, to block out the views.
Yeah, by three feet, or to block out the area of the siding, you mean?
Yeah, to block out the parking, the parking area, is that something that you're?
Yeah, we want to work on it to make it more sufficient, and maybe gated around or something to make it more, to make it look nice. Because it's a little bit coming down, the rocks a little bit, but yeah, we wanted to make that better.
Okay.
Yeah, we was thinking about fencing it up.
Alright, those are, those are my only main concerns really, and under the standard of dimensional requirements, kind of stuck with those. I was actually surprised, I thought you were turning this into a four-unit house.
Yeah, no, it was, yeah, it was alright.
It's already four units, it's already taxed at that, so, I didn't realize that, so. But, yeah, those are the only questions I had, so I wish you the best of luck.
Alright, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Hey Sean, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on the parking, so how many spaces are going to be? Even, even without tearing the, I think it's actually a barn, the garage, it looks like it used to be a barn at one time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But even without tearing that down, are you, were you planning on stacking the spaces in the?
It could change for the better, but as far as right now, we have eight, but like, it's a little squeeze, obviously, because it's like, it's already there. But, we're knocking it down, it definitely will make it more parking, like probably for visitors or something, if they come, they can have a visitor parking. It'll definitely increase the parking by a lot.
Okay, I would probably just, Mr. Chairman, I'm in favor of granting all the variances to just keep the, the pre-existing, was it a non-conforming use? Or is it, yeah, so just to continue with that pre-existing non-conforming use of a four-family.
Yes.
In addition to, I think you agreed to, with the planning board, to work with DPD on an official landscape plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would just want to add that we, that a final parking, I guess, layout is submitted to DPD. There's plenty of on-street parking, the traffic engineer mentioned that in his comments, since Westford Street was redone. It was widened a little bit, and there's parking on both sides, so. But it's good that you'll have the number required, which I think is eight, for a four-family. So, once you knock the barn down, or the garage down, if you can add another space or two. But I would just like to see, actually, I don't need to see that, but I'd like to see that it's submitted to the planning office, the final parking layout.
Okay.
Okay, and I want to thank you, I know, I'm sure the chairman will thank you too, but I, when I went out there again this past weekend, I saw. You had a number of public notices on the front door, there was a bulletin board, actually, a cork board with.
Yeah, yeah, we tried to make it.
Two of them were blowing in the wind, I think the thumbtacks came loose, but.
Oh, okay.
But they were all up there when I was there this weekend, so.
Yeah, we just had a misunderstanding because of the snow, you know how that goes.
Yeah, it was a minor technicality, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna sit back, but.
Okay.
We want to move forward with you guys.
Alright, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mike, Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to me, this application, it makes sense, he's asking for a lot of relief. But the planning board seems to agree, as well as the different departments in the city. So, overall, I think this is a good project, so, wish you the best of luck, sir.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Van, Gary?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. My esteemed colleagues have echoed my concern as far as the parking goes, and then the landscape plan be submitted to the DPD for approval is a condition. I do appreciate you with the continuance getting the sign, the postings up, you know, according to zoning law, so I appreciate that. Is this gonna be either of you a resident? Are you gonna resident yourself there?
Um, no.
No?
No.
So it's all rental property?
Yes.
Yeah, you're a resident of the city?
Um, no, I live in J.K.
Okay, yeah, well, I think it's, you know, I think it's great that you had the foresight to come forward and take a look at that barn slash garage and take it down. It definitely is gonna become a safety issue, it does give you that extra space, stack parking as well, so. I wish you the best of luck with your investment in the city.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey Gary, Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a couple of questions, but I do think this makes a lot of sense to determine that this is something that meets zoning. Or get the proper zoning and special permit items straightened out.
Yes.
If the garage is taken down though, I'm just confused as to how many parking spaces we could possibly get. What kind of benefit that would have? I understand that it might be a benefit where the structure is weak, and we want to eliminate a weak structure, but looking at the layout. I think we possibly do have seven spaces. Is the occupancy there at the building something that requires eight spaces? Do you have a need where tenants are actually parking on the street right now?
Um, is, nobody's living in there right now.
Okay.
So it's completely empty.
Okay, and we're talking four units?
Yes, four units.
Okay, now are the four units multi-bedroom, how many?
Yes, where there's like a studio, there is a two-bedroom. Then there's another one, which is, is another two-bedroom, and there, there's a one-bedroom studio. So there's pretty much six beds, six total bedrooms in there.
Okay.
Total.
Okay, so the seven spaces sounds pretty adequate then, I mean, just as a guess, as far as, you know, what you might have for tenants and what they might need for parking spaces. So I'm not, I'm not sure the garage is really a key component here, because even if you do take the garage down, we're gonna be stacking three-deep? Is that something that we could even allow for?
So stacked parking is not allowed?
Yeah.
For the off-street parking regulations? So, you know, we had discussed, considering that the garage would still be there, because we didn't know that that was.
Yeah.
Being considered, that we grant variances so that there, we would avoid the stacked parking. And also, the, with four, in the zoning code, with four residential units or more, there is a three, maximum of three spaces that you can have side by side. So that's another thing to consider.
And that's where the fourth space doesn't count, so that's why you only count six of the seven? Right, I understand?
Right.
Okay. Only three side by side, huh?
Yeah, so, because it needs to be, when there's four more spaces, there needs to be a width of, or each space has to be considered 12 feet in width. And their proposed driveway is 36 feet, so 12 by 3 is 36.
Alright.
When it's less than three units, or three or less, you can have a width of nine feet. So if that was the case, then they could have the four spaces. But because they're proposing the four units, they do need, they, they make that, they meet that threshold where they need 12 for each space, 12 feet in width for each space. So they need, there can only be three side by side.
And is the building currently taxed as a four-family?
Yes, it is, and it's been assessed as a four-family for several years, I think, from what I.
Over, over 20 years, it's been.
From what I understand though, the building's not, hasn't been occupied for quite some time.
Yeah, maybe 10 years or.
Okay.
Not too sure, to be honest.
Well, I guess the reason I was bringing up the garage is largely because of the, my colleagues want to make a condition that we would have, that the garage would come down or something. I don't know if that really would provide the parking, additional parking that would meet zoning, so I don't know if that's a logical condition, that's all. But I still see seven spaces there, and I only count six bedrooms, so I kind of think we're in the realm of reality here for that location, that it would work, so. No further questions, oh, actually, I did have one, there was a comment about the second means of egress that came up in the comments. I was just wondering if one of the units is not complying with two means of egress currently, do you know?
No, I don't, I have no idea of that.
Okay, that'd be something you'd get through the building department anyway when you go for your occupancy permit, so you'll have to resolve that at that point.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we don't have any egress points that require a compromise in the setbacks.
Okay.
Okay, anyway, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, I have a few different questions asked, but I want to go, to me, one of the biggest concerns with the property is the parking. And I did have, in looking through 6.1, there was, of course, I'm trying to find it now, there was something that talked to the point of if the use changes. And, do you know what I'm referring to? There was a section in 6.1 that talk about the change in use, obviously, at one point, there was this. So the deal about the multifamily and how the city treated it, I thought it was also in there as a one-family, but it was being used as a four.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so we.
So it's pre-existing non-conforming.
Right, so are we technically saying that the use is changing, correct?
Right, so they're legally changing the use so that.
Right.
Occupying four units is illegal.
So what bearing does that have on the parking requirements?
So they would be required to have eight spaces, two for each unit.
Right, but this gentleman also stated, it hasn't been occupied for, I'm not sure if you know, but was that ever definitively identified, how long it's been taken?
It was not, that came to my attention actually.
There was something also in here talked about the number of years, I think it was like three years, if it hasn't been used for three years. And the implementation of the code changing for parking, there's a few different things around the parking, which I'm not sure if you're aware or not aware. But my, one of my concerns about the property was, it's, we're calling it a four-family, but who determined that it is a four-family and can stay as a four-family? I don't even think that came out of the planning board, because.
Oh, so the applicant has requested, or had requested a legal use determination, and our plans examiner said that four units would be feasible. But that it did need to be, would need to go to planning board, zoning board to legally change it from its non-conforming status to a legal four-unit dwelling.
So the city's satisfied for a four-family, but he wouldn't have the parking.
Right.
To meet the requirements.
Right.
Which is kind of.
Which is why he would.
Yeah, I know.
Speaking of variance.
And I know the traffic engineer, one of his comments talked about using the street parking, which. I was kind of caught off guard with that comment, because we're not trying to put cars on the street, per se.
So our traffic engineer stated that it's a wide enough corridor, and it could accommodate for it, and it's kind of what we took as.
Yeah, no, I know what he said, but we took that approach with a lot of properties, we'd have more cars on the street. So I wasn't really sure where he was going with the comment, that's all. But, you know, Dennis, Dennis talked about the garage coming down, which, again, I didn't know based on the planning board meeting, what you were going to do. And because we don't have, we don't have any definitive parking plan that's ever been submitted to us, except what's on the plot, right? So, I heard your statement about, you can have three, you said what, side by side?
Right.
So if you take this property here, where's the three going side by side that can be granted? Where would they be on the lot?
So staff submitted an amended plan, that was just a, really just a suggestion showing what could work. And that was under the impression or the suggestion that, that the board would grant the four variances. So there would be the spot in the, well, this is prior when we didn't know the garage was potentially being taken down. But in the event that it was remaining, there'd be a spot in the garage, two spots to the left, and then one spot to the far right on the plan. So the spaces, the three bottom spaces would be removed, because you can't have a stacked parking configuration. And then we just remove the space that was in front of the door of the garage.
So, Mr. Metz, is, you mentioned the garage is coming down, and next to the garage, there's, looks like there's another piece of the structure. I don't know if that's part of the garage, do you?
It's kind of attached to the garage, and that will be going down too.
So everything is gonna be gone, you're just gonna leave the main building, correct?
Yes, yes, correct.
So I would assume it's gonna create the possibility for more parking, correct?
Correct.
Now, can they do angled parking on that site?
Uh, yeah, we do have angled parking standards in our off-street.
Right, which is in 6.1.
Right.
So I, since we don't have, since we don't have something in front of us, like a parking plan, per se. I think we're kind of guessing at how many spots these gentlemen could, I'm happy you're taking, again, I'm not saying I'm happy you're taking the garage down. But I think if you want a four-unit, I want as many cars off the street as possible.
Correct.
If you're gonna have tenants living there, you gentlemen are not gonna be there, correct?
Correct.
So it's not gonna be managed, it's basically tenants and a landlord, correct?
Yeah.
Are you gentlemen gonna be the landlord? Or what's, what's?
We don't know that yet, it depends. Yeah, we are gonna be the landlords.
Okay. So I don't, I'm not trying to hold this up, but I don't think we have a definitive parking plan. I don't know how many more spots, unless you gentlemen have figured it out.
Before that, we, we thought about the garage coming down, we already had sufficient parkings as to what we had. And that was just gonna make it a lot, a little more better for more parkings to be available, so.
What do you mean, you have sufficient parking?
No, the, what it shows, that there was eight cars that could fit there, with the garage being in there. If two cars would have went in the garage, because that was the plan, to two cars to go in the garage.
There's one parking spot in garage?
It says one, but we was, we wanted to extend the door to make it two, because it's very wide, it's like, almost like a big house, it's like a barn.
Right, but you can't, you can't use stacked parking the way it's presented here and get inside that door either.
Okay.
That was, that was discussed, not that the planning board was addressing parking, that comes before us. You had no means of egress getting in there, and I know the fire department had a comment about accessibility into the parking area. Also, if you're gonna have cars the way they were lined up. I'm just trying to, I, if you're gonna take the garage down and that whole structure, I don't know if he can get additional four in back there, in other words.
We just want another one in there, at least to pass the code, to pass your requirements. And then anything else would be like given, as far as visitor parking, to nobody to be in the street. But we're opening up that area, it'll definitely give you a more.
I wouldn't, I appreciate the visitor parking, but I wouldn't worry about that right now, you gotta meet the requirements of, if you're gonna have four units there, you need eight parking spots.
Okay.
You don't have the parking, you can correct me if I'm wrong, he doesn't have the parking the way it's laid out on this plan, correct?
Right, because it doesn't fit the standards that are required in the zoning code.
Right, right. It's just, it's not, for me, maybe the board, the other board members don't agree with me, but the way it's set up here.
Yes.
It's not gonna work with me, the other board members might differ the way I'm looking at this, but.
Okay.
I keep going back, if you're gonna get rid of that structure in the rear. And whether you have parking straight in, in that rear section, I don't know. He can go either angled or, he could have straight-in parking, correct? Is there any restrictions on that?
Yeah, he could have that, it's still though, I mean, he can't have the stacked parking.
No, no, I know that, I'm just saying, single.
Yes.
I don't know if he gets four in there, he gets five? Do you have any, do you have any clue, Dennis?
Actually, I can easily see eight spaces on that lot with six double stacked and two angled on the side. I think, now that, I know that you're taking down that piece of the building between the garage and the main house. You should do, you should do a plan that shows your eight spaces, because I think you can get them. You see that two, maybe six double stacked in the back, and then two angled up against the house?
Right, and that's why.
I think.
That's why I kind of asked about the angle, I thought the angle could at least work.
You're right.
On the side of, on the side of the structure.
Yeah, you're right.
On the left-hand side. If, if that, if the city accepts that, at least you get two angles.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, it is difficult to kind of understand it without seeing a plan.
Exactly.
Well, no, I know that, so, I guess what I'm gonna ask right now is, do we, do we need to continue this? And do these gentlemen need to provide another parking plan? Or do we condition it, and then they work with you to provide, since we don't know exactly how many spots we can get in there? since we don't know exactly how many spots we can get in there?
We can condition it, similar to approving the landscape plan with DPD. If the board is comfortable conditioning it so that they, a parking plan is also developed in agreement with DPD, then that's fine.
Yeah, I, I think you can work with the city on getting the eight spots and showing the raising of the, of the structure in the rear. There's going to have to be some modifications to your plans, is what I'm, what I'm saying.
Okay, he's just going to have to go back to the joint board, right?
Yeah, well, that's why you're here before us, so we can get this thing to work. Yeah, and you answered the question. I know I was going to ask on the four units, you mentioned there's two two-bedroom and two studios. Sounded like what you were saying, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And there're going to be tenants living there, so they're going to, they're going to be responsible for their own snow storage?
No, no.
You gentlemen are going to do what?
Yeah, we're going to provide them, we're going to have somebody going in there. And when it snows like tomorrow, we'll clean it up, especially when there's tenants in there.
Okay, all right. The fire, the fire department, going back to them again. I think if we take care of that parking area, that'll take at least the fire alarm system and sprinklers, is that, that's all will be handled through the building when they get the building permit, correct?
Right, that will be handled with them.
Which ties in with what Dennis was talking about, the egress issue, correct?
Correct.
All right. Now, the screening, I know the planning board talked to you about that also. On the right-hand side of your property, there's currently a stone wall already there, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, is that, is that on your property, or is that, has that been determined?
It hasn't been determined yet, but the way it looks, it looks like it's on our property. And then you have to go up to the next for the other property. So I'm assuming it's on my property, yeah.
So for the screening on that right-hand side, obviously, I don't, if you're going to do, what are you doing with the paving that's currently there, where the parking is? Are you, you going to resurface that, or are you going to, well, you're going to have to do something in back, right? If you're going to-
Yeah, we're going to resurface the back. As far as the front, it looks pretty good.
Yeah.
But if the garage does come down, we're going to have to resurface that and make it nice and even.
So are you going to, to me, you'd probably have to do just some type of fencing on that right-hand side, correct?
Yes.
And I know you mentioned, so now, are they going to have to loop it all the way in back now?
Yeah, we're going to loop it around to the house.
Yeah, so that'll fulfill, by putting in, excuse me, by putting in the new parking in the rear, these gentlemen will run-
Right.
Say a fence, for instance, all the way around.
Because screening will still be required. With spots more than, three, more than three spaces, you need screening around the parking from abutting residence, residences.
And I assume it's going to be some type of fencing, I don't know. There's really, it's not going to be put Aravides in there or anything, there's not going to be, I don't see how you're going to put landscaping in there.
We suggested evergreens, just because there isn't any soft space or landscaping on the, on the plan, and that was going to act as the screen. But he, he can, or the applicant can also post a fence as well. It's kind of an option, either or, but I think staff did like to see-
That's going to come out of the landscape plan?
Right.
The screening, is that for us, or is that part of the landscape plan?
This landscape plan was really acting as the screening that was required, and that was the condition of the planning board.
Okay, so we don't need to have that as a condition, correct?
Right, no.
As it's just about the parking, okay. Okay. Yeah, the parking, for me, was the biggest issue for that site, you know what I mean? But, because I, I think you guys' plan is to go in there and take a building that hasn't been used, and you're going to resurface the outside, is that, is that your plan, or?
Yeah, there's a, there's a size that is very old, and we're going to add those, new nice light to it, to make it nice.
Is there much work inside you have to do?
Yeah, there's some work inside, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, so before I get to any conditions, any of the board members have any comments at this point?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just one more, Mr. Metz, you talked about snow removal. Are you going to be removing the snow, or plowing it, pulling it out of there?
Yeah, just pretty much putting it to the side. I think we should have enough space to put it, like, close somewhere where we could get it together. And it shouldn't be an issue.
So you'd be storing it back in the far-right-hand side, or the far-left, depending on what the parking plan is, comes-
Yeah, depending on how it goes, yeah. Whatever space that we have that they're not going to be using, we'll just pile it up right there, and-
That'll be designated as snow.
Yeah, that would be like the snow area.
So if you went two angled spots in the back, then you reconfigure the stacked parking. Sorry, you're going to, you're going to leave, you're going to leave storage there?
Yeah, yeah.
And then hopefully it won't get too high.
Yeah, hopefully it won't snow for a week straight, we have a blizzard for a week.
No, I just-
I might have to come back to City Hall and-
Yeah, with the site, with the site and space, you know, we don't want to have, put a burn it on you to be hauling out snow every, every storm, like you're a big commercial site. As long as you have an understanding amongst yourselves as the management partners that you're going to designate that and convey that to the snow removal crew.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, so hearing none on the comments, as far as conditions, I guess the first one will be to incorporate the planning board's condition for the landscape plan. The second will be, are they going to, is this what we're going to use as a document for their, for their plans? They're going to continue, if they're going to make changes, is it all going to be done on this plot plan?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So the second condition will be the, to show the removal of the garage structure and the submittal of a new parking plan to be reviewed with DPD for approval. And I would ask if we can get the plans, if the board can get the plans after it's put together, just so we can take a look at it, if we have any issues with it, we can bring that up. Anybody, anybody else, 70?
Can I just ask?
Sure.
Should the applicant and DPD not come up with an agreement that does fit, that does meet all the standards that's in the zoning code, does the applicant need to come back to seek a variance for parking relief?
Well, I, my opinion is-
Just because we don't know, just because we don't, we don't actually know just yet that, you know, with the screening requirements and that the eight spaces are, I know that it's likely, but just because we don't really know that it can be done for sure in the event that it cannot, is it expected that they come back to grant, or seek relief, parking relief?
Well, I, my opinion, the answer would be yes, they'd have to come back before us. If there's not an agreement with the city, I don't think we've ever run into that situation. But I believe the planning board said the same thing to them, that they needed to, they wanted to see the landscape plan. And if need be, if they weren't satisfied, they could ask the applicant to come back in, and they would rework. I think it would be the same thing with the parking plan.
Okay.
They would need to come back in and find out why the two bodies didn't come to an agreement-
Sure.
-on the parking plan. I'm hoping that isn't going to be the case, but. Anybody else have any other conditions?
Three, Mr. Chairman. Are we talking landscape plan or a fence, or both?
Well, the landscape plan was a condition that the planning board used in their determination.
Yep.
And I asked the question if the landscape plan included the screening, correct?
Yeah, so the landscape would really act as the screening, which is a requirement for the driveway.
So it'd be an evergreen-type landscaping element that would cut down on the view of the cars and/or block the-
Right.
-lights or whatever going into the rooms of the apartment next door?
Correct.
All right, thank you, that's all.
But I think Mr. Metz also said something about maybe doing a fence instead of that, but that's what they're going to work out.
Right, I just think a fence would be as effective as a landscaping plan, so yes.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Any other conditions? Okay, so hearing none, could I have a motion, please?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. On the matter before us, I make a motion to approve CB-2017-07, a petition type of variance. The applicant is MNW Real Estate LLC. The property located at 153 Westford Street. The petitioner is seeking relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals under Section 5.1 of Dimensional Regulations of the Low Zone Ordinance, and any relief that is required. The subject property is located in an additional multifamily zoning district with the following conditions: to incorporate the planning board's landscape plan, to show the removal of the garage structure, and submit parking plans for DPD for approval, and to the board as well. And if they can't come to an agreement with DPD, that they come back to the board for review for the application.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Bailey.
Approved with conditions.
Member Perrin.
Approved with conditions.
Member Pack.
Approved with conditions.
Member Palion.
Approved with conditions.
Member Callian.
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with conditions.
Okay, Mr. Metz, Mrs. Paris, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Wish you best of luck, yeah.
All right, thank you guys, have a good night.
Thank you, have a good evening. Okay, next matter before us is under New Business. This is ZB 2017-10, the petitions of variance. The applicant is Loon Hill Development, Inc., property located at 109 A Street. And the petition, the applicant is seeking relief under Section 5.1 for minimum lot size per dwelling unit, and any other relief that is required for construction of a single-family dwelling unit on a vacant lot. The subject property is located in a traditional, single-family zoning district. Good evening, Ms. Theodore.
Good evening, George Theodore, 133 Market Street, representing the applicant. As you just stated, we're seeking a variance for the minimum lot size to construct a single-family dwelling at 109 A Street. The zoning for this, for this area is 7,000 square feet. The applicant has 6,325 square feet. In addition, we were before the planning board last week, in which we obtained, requested, and obtained a special permit, which allowed for the decreasing the frontage by special permit from 70 feet to 55 feet, which was granted. I have before you some of the materials here that lists the, an assessor's map and a list of the properties on both sides of the A Street between New Spalding and Puffer Street. And it shows that the lots themselves, that this particular lot of 6,325 square feet is as large, if not larger, but for one lot on that side of A Street. In addition, it's the, similar to the other side of the street, in which the majority of the lots are less than 6,325 square feet. And as I had previously mentioned, the lot adjacent to this particular lot at 105 A Street is the exact same size, 6,325. So, given the size of the lot, we can't do anything with it, we can't build on it, we can't develop it at all. The characteristics of that lot, given the square footage is, you know, without granting a variance, would be an undue hardship. We do believe, and we, that a vacant lot anywhere, and a vacant lot in the neighborhood, which is undeveloped, undesirable, and unsightly, is not good for the community, it's not good for the city. We ask that by allowing us to go forward on this and to develop it, to build a single-family dwelling that would, that would be consistent with the neighborhood, that would be owned, privately owned, would contribute to the neighborhood, would contribute to the city, and also would add, would add needed tax revenue to the city. In addition, that by doing this and granting this under the zoning bylaws of the city, that this would satisfy the requirements for the zoning, or not derogate from the zoning ordinance, or from the public good. So with that being said, we ask that you look favorably upon this application. And as I previously said, we were before the planning board last week, and one item which they, they insisted that they would maintain jurisdiction over the design review, to make sure that what we build here would be consistent and comply with the neighborhood. Mr. Dan Phelps, who is the immediate neighbor, was here last week. We have been in communication with him to make sure that he's within, you know, within the loop with everything, so he knows what we're doing and how we're going about everything. He was unable to make it today. We did reach out to the community here. We did, we did send all the information that was filed to the Highlands Neighborhood Organization, so they would be made aware. We wanted to attend the meeting, however, we, we, we had just missed the deadline for getting into the meeting, but, but we did reach out to them, so they would be made aware. So with that being said, I ask that you act upon this favorably, and we'd be here to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else to add, then I'll open it up to the public, and I'll go move it to the board. Anyone here like to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone here like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir?
My name is Steve McCarron, hi Dennis. I live at 139 A Street. I grew up on A Street, and it's a very nice neighborhood, until the late 1980s, early 90s, when houses were being crammed in by builders before the zoning was changed to its current status to stop the overbuilding. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, many houses were, were, congestion happened. They were crammed in, and the builders, of course, came and went, and they were gone. And we, who lived and grew up there for years, had to put up with the congestion, the noise, from other, from people who were renters mainly, because they were in single-family dwellings. And now, this is supposed to be a single-family dwelling, and it may be, but I have two in my neighborhood, three houses for me on either side. They're, they're supposed to be single-family, but they're not. Anything can happen today with what's going on in my neighborhood. I could even point them out to you if you want to know, the owners, one owner does not live in one, and the other one has put in improper housing, in a cellar, attic. And sometimes I can't even park in front of my own house during the winter storms, because I, I have a snow blower, I clean out in front of my house, and I have two brothers and my wife living together. And I have to scrounge for a space to park, because they come and take my spot, because they don't clean up what's in front of them. I'm not going to say that's going to happen, that will happen, but that's what's been going on in the neighborhood, and that's, I have no doubt. The congestion that's already in front of that lot, and even across the street, when our house was put in about 15, 20 years ago, it's, it's very dangerous. There's so many cars there from people living in rental places now, that were originally supposed to be for families, in-laws. It's just getting congested over there, and I understand it is unsightly, unless there's a nice clean wood area, which is not, but it hasn't been maintained at all by the current owner. And something should be done, but another house crammed in in the neighborhood is just another way to bring it down the values, bring down the integrity of the neighborhood. It's been there for decades, and I've been there for 50 years, actually 56 years mostly. I had lived 10 years out of, out of town, helping out relatives and stuff. Mainly, my life's been there, and I really love the neighborhood, and I've been there. And I think something should be done. I'd like to have more green space, because we lost a large area across the street, and that's where the renters are, who don't care about the property at all, which was originally, as I said, an in-law dwelling. So I'd like to decline it, but that's, of course, up to you. Just to try- just to try to keep the integrity of the neighborhood from more overbuilding.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Opposition, opposition? Hearing done, that portion of public hearing is closed. Like to open it up to the board. Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Theodore, do you have any comments on the, the comments from Mr. McCarron with regards to his concerns?
Well, what I would say is, right now, it's a very, it's an unsightly vacant lot. That being said, it's, it's, it's not contributing to the community. It's not contributing to the neighborhood that the development and investment in that community and the construction of an owner-occupied, single-family home, in my opinion, would be a benefit to the neighborhood, the community and the city. And I, I think we have to understand also that, that, that we do, this is a development in, in a well-established neighborhood. And as you can see from the assessor's map, there are homes that have been there for many years on lots of much smaller than 6325 square feet. So, what we're asking for as far as the variance goes in this relief, we feel is, is, you know, is not a great leap to allow this to happen. So, we believe it can be done well, it can be done tastefully, and something that would be a benefit.
Thank you very much. And, no, I appreciate the comments from Mr. McCarron. I tend to agree with you, Mr. Theodore, that the, I mean, the lot is similar and a little bigger than most of the other ones. And to have it just sit there and just be nothing there is not going to, not going to really help benefit the city. It could be, maybe, could be turned into more green space, but again, that doesn't, I don't think, I think there'll be more value coming out of it if there's a single-family home on there with tax revenue coming in from that single-family residence. And to placate a little bit of Mr. McCarron's concerns, I mean, this is in the traditional, single-family zoning area. If someone, if the petitioner or anybody down the line would seek to try to put in some multifamily or, you know, double, more dwellings than not, they would have to come before this board in order to do that. With the zoning regulations being what they are, I mean, I can't predict on the future, obviously, but it, they would, they would have to meet those, those requirements as well. So, but that's, that's all I really had and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions. I'm in favor of the application. I don't really like to look back at, or I don't think we're able to look back at, let's say, mistakes that are, were made in the past with, before or after zoning or the fact that there are some absentee landlords in the neighborhood. Those are enforcement matters that I'm sure if there was more, there were more specifics, they could be referred to the planning office and they don't really have any bearing on this particular application. I think once this home is built, which, by the way, it's not, the house, the property itself is not oversized. There's plenty of, there'll be plenty of green space in the back and open space. I don't really see an issue at all. Over time, I think it will look like it was, was there all along. And again, it's the second or third largest lot within a two or three-block radius. So, one question I would have is in regard to some trees on the left-hand side. I, when I went out to the site, I couldn't quite tell if some of the, I think there were pines, were on the neighboring property to the left or on this property and just any, I guess the point is just if there's any trees or, or current landscape in the back that can be saved during construction. I know it's difficult to get equipment in and out and it's certainly an overgrown lot. There's a canoe on the lot, there's a trailer on the lot and then the shed, which I know will be removed, but...
To, to your question, there, there is a very large, mature tree at the rear of the lot. A beautiful tree that, if that could be kept, you know, that certainly would be a benefit.
Yeah, and again, you did provide the elevations for the property and I took a drive around the neighborhood this weekend and it, and it actually, although it'll be a modern, new and modern structure, it has some of the same features as some of the homes, even directly across the street and up and down a couple of the other streets in the neighborhood. So, there's a lot of different housing styles in that neighborhood, for lack of a more technical term, but I don't really have any issues, like I said, with the, with the application. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Dan?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Mr. McCarron for speaking. I know it's not always easy to express your opinions on the matter. You know, I do agree that this is more of a proper build, a single-family instead of leaving it kind of just empty or a vacant lot. So, so hopefully, you know, there'd be good neighbors and I'm sure Mr. Theodore and, and the builders will gladly work with you if you have any questions or comments. But those are the only comments I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Gary?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, is this going to be owner, build and reside? Or they got to sell it?
The builder's going to develop it. The applicant is going to develop it and, and sell it to be what we would presume to be an owner-occupied new home.
Right, right. As I look at, as I look at the plans on the right side elevations, we have one window in the center of the home. I'm wondering if maybe you could speak to that?
Just right here. We're just looking for the floor plan to see where that lines out.
We didn't provide the floor plans. We provided the...
Excuse me, if you could just, if you could just reference for the record, state your name and address, please.
DNJC Loon Hill Development. I didn't provide the floor plans. We provided the elevations. That one window, I can't exactly say what room it's in. I'd be more than happy to get floor plans and we can elaborate more on that if necessary.
If I could comment on that, I, I agree with you that looking at that one side for either neighbor and just seeing a sheer, you know...
One-sided house.
Side with that window right there is unsightly and unappealing. And what I can state to that is that we are going to be, under the provisions of the, the special permit that was obtained, Mr. Frichette of the planning board made sure that he, as a condition of that approval, that they would have design review over this. And I know that that's something that they definitely would address and, and would like both sides, those, the neighbors, when they look at either side of that, that house to make sure it's done tastefully and designed, designed so that they're not going to get tired of looking at that for the next 30 or 40 years.
Yeah, I mean, between March 2nd and March 8th, the comments from the city, you've, you've addressed them. Obviously, once again, in front of us, you're very well-prepared as it relates to your, to your application package. But I must agree with both Mr. Frichette. Aesthetically, it's, it's going to get old rather, rather quick from a, from an aesthetic neighborhood piece. It kind of, it, it just jumps out to me as minimizing aesthetics. I don't know if there's a construction matter related to? Why, why would there just be one window in the center of the home?
I can assure you that we can add at least one more window to that side. This plan was designed basically to allow it to fit widthwise and to have a, an attractive front elevation to match the rest. Doesn't mean we overlooked, excuse me, overlooked everything else, but it's possible that that one side had a window for some structural reason. I believe if, if I remember correctly, the stairs go up on that side. So, that may be at the hallway, at the top of the stairs. And there may be a bathroom behind that, but it doesn't mean we can't possibly add a ba, a window in that bathroom.
I, I just think it would balance out aesthetically. I think...
I agree.
As a homeowner, I would be starving for, for sunlight. And as a neighbor, I'd be adverse to having one solid sheet with, and I don't mean to be disingenuous, it appears to be a second-floor drive-through window.
You'd rather have nothing than, than one window.
I'd rather have multiple windows as opposed to one or nothing. Just, and that has come before us in, in previous applications where applicants have had no windows on their plan or one window. And, you know, we've looked to see, we raised that, so...
And, and, and as we said before, we were working, we'd mentioned the immediate neighbor at 105, who was here at the last meeting, to keep him involved. And also, we'd like to do something that makes him happy as well, as well as for the neighbor on the other side.
So, I, I'd be interested to see that revised plan, that Mr. Frichette from the planning board, and if you just balance out another window in, in that second-floor space. I think it'll, it'll break it up and it'll ease the, it'll ease my mind and the neighborhood be blending more aesthetically. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask a couple of questions, but I just want to start by saying that the, the site plan looks great in that you've accomplished a lot of the aspects of zoning. You're 10% smaller than what's allowed, a little less than 10% smaller than what's allowed. So, you're pretty close. The, the frontage is a bigger issue, but you've been able to provide a reasonable-sized home. I'm assuming it's a three-bedroom home, is that correct? And you've exceeded side yard setbacks, exceeded front yard setback and exceeded rear yard setback and provided two off-street parking spaces. So, you haven't stuffed the lot, is what I'm saying with real estate. And so, I, I, I would just like to ask, is this site plan representative of what you're going to build? Is this the site plan? Is that possible that we could make it a condition that this site plan will be the site plan that will be built on the property?
And, and as a matter of fact, Mr. McCarthy, there were comments from the, from DPD indicating that we, when the first site plan that we submitted, there were certain elements on the elevation and the elevations that were provided, including a bump out the deck. And so, there were questions with respect to that. We revised that, specifically put them on the site plan so they would be addressed, so there wouldn't be any question with respect to the, the requirement for obtaining any other, any other variances. So, we can state that... That's what we'll build.
I think it's important, especially for your neighbor, Mr. McCarron, to know that the house is going to have three bedrooms and you're going to have two off-street parking spaces. So, the reality that this property in a single-family zone could possibly come before us as a multifamily is very remote. I think just because the size of the house is so small. And the fact that you provided two off-street spaces, I think will go a long way to minimizing the influence that it'll have on the neighborhood with additional cars cluttering the street that's already crammed with cars as it is. So, I'm glad that you chose to scale this correctly. And I think that in the neighborhood, it's, it's odd because we require 70 feet and there's very, very few lots in close proximity that come close to 70 feet. So, I think it fits well in that neighborhood for sure. So, I think it's a great application. I just want to make that one condition, that that site plan is, if, if the rest of the board agrees. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay. I did, I did see the planning board meeting and I know Chairman Linderhand asked a question about the lot numbers. And you, you were able to answer the question, Mr. Theodore, because one of the things that would really bother me with the site is if it was, if those two lots were split off intentionally to create your own hardship, hardship. But I understood the explanation you gave with the, the history and with Mr. Phelps purchasing that property on the end. So, I understood that. I, I know the neighborhood very well. Again, if this was just being split off to Mr. McCarron's point, I would have looked at it and said, you know, the neighborhood is way too dense, we don't need another, we need another home. I know the, to me, the ideal thing would be if either neighbor was purchasing and kept it as open space, but I know that's not what's before us this evening. In fact, Mr. McCarron's property, I know on your handout, Mr. Theodore, looks like his property would pretty much be the only property on A Street that would meet current zoning today if it was put in place. So, you are correct that most of the homes, at least the lot sizes, are in that 6,000 to 6325. They're almost cookie cutter, per se. Not that it was designed that way, but the other, the other thing is, and Dennis's point about what's being built and the planning board doing their review of the final plans, I think will bode well for the neighborhood. The window Gary mentioned, I noticed the same thing, but I think that's on Mr. Phelps' side anyway. So, I, I know that'll be taken care of. That's not really a concern of mine. But as far as the reason why you're here this evening, I believe the petitioner's met the burden of, it's a slightly undersized lot, it's consistent with the neighborhood. I think the, hopefully, the product that's delivered bodes well for the neighborhood. It should, brand-new home. Hopefully, new neighbors will set in there. One of the things I did like, and I know Dennis asked the question, but it looks like you're going to be providing a good amount of green space for this new home also, which I know when I look at that lot, it seems to be kind of, it looks like it kind of dips off to an angle. I don't know how much work needs to be done on the, putting your footings in and stuff, but it looks like there's plenty of green space being provided and you're also providing the ample amount of parking, which is sufficient for this project. So, I really didn't have any other comments. Only that, I believe, it met the burden of why you're here this evening. Did anybody have any? I know, I guess, the only question I'll ask is, Dennis asked about what you're showing is what you're building. Is that falling underneath planning board? Or can we condition that also? That's, I have a question on that. Is it going to be covered under the planning board final review? Or can we also have a condition that states Dennis's comment regarding what's being presented as what's going to be built?
I think you can also condition that.
Okay. So, that'll be one condition that, and you, are you fine with that, Mr. Theodore?
I am, as long as we're referring to, there was a revised plan dated March 3rd, 2017.
Yeah, I actually, I don't have the, but I actually have it handwritten here where you show, excuse me, where you show the deck being put on, the bulkhead. There's also the bump out on the left-hand side. That's just, I think you show the proposed curb cut 12 feet, correct?
That's correct.
Yep. I don't think anything else changed from the prior submittal. If I have the, I actually did everything in red. That's, you know, old age setting in. I did it in red instead of making another copy. So, I think that captured it all. And, because I noticed when you did that bump out there that you have, you know, the number of windows. The presentation on the left side was that much more than it was on the right. I don't know why, but I'm sure it'll be handled to the point that you made. Anybody else have any other comments?
Do we, do we, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, Gary first and then Mike.
If we could go back to the front and rear elevation on your proposal here. Let's see, you have the double, the double-hung windows in the front. Is that something we can carry as we look through those windows? Is that something we can carry to left and, to the left and the right? Or does that become a, a matter of...
Are you talking about having another double-hung window over the entrance?
No, no, I'm saying is to carry the, the doubles in the front and the rear. I was wondering, would you, yeah, would you be able to carry that through left and right? That same, that same aesthetic theme? Yeah.
Providing the room is there.
Providing that the room is there. So, as opposed to, if you were looking at right side and left side, you've got, on both sides, you just have that one window. So, I would like to see a condition either we... we, we split them to two singles, or we go to, we go to doubles. Because I know you...
Two singles or a double?
Or two doubles, depending on space. I just, we'd just like to see that open up, I just, because you're...
We'll get as much light on those walls as we possibly can.
Yeah, as long as, you're kind of carrying the aesthetics throughout the entire second-floor. If I do look at your front elevation, you are carrying a double with a single, so I would just like to see it consistent, either we just go with two singles on left and right side elevations, and or depending on space interior, we'd go double-double. Not trying to impose any further finances on the double-hung windows, I know windows get crazy out there.
If, if space doesn't permit, is the single and a double fine?
Yes.
Because I believe this is a bedroom, off the top of my head, putting a double there shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I would just, I would just like to, you know, part of the condition, just have that left and right side, have those windows consistent with the second-floor architectural plan. And any, two singles, a double and a singles, or two doubles, any, any of those combinations would, would be satisfactory, and I appreciate looking at that and understanding that...
No, certainly, I, yeah, I think...
It gives us three, it gives us a few options, it allows, it allows the builder to go in there and make the, the value, not gonna just put a window in and it's a half-wall or a quarter-wall or walk-in closet, but I understand the gist of it.
Yeah, okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Mike?
I was just gonna add to the, the window conversation, but when I looked at the, when I went out to the site and then looked at the elevations, I, I just thought, and I'm in favor of adding, adding some windows there if, if it can be done, but I was looking at the right elevation and thinking there was only one window there, more for privacy, both for the, the new home and then the, the old farmhouse that's to the right, or, and then there's a sort of an outbuilding attached to the back, and that maybe people didn't want to be looking out the window, because there's no trees on the right elevation, there are trees on the left, and so there's, you know, a little bit of screening between properties, but again, it's not, I, that's just the way I was looking at it when I saw just one window, is that it was by design because of the, so that the neighbors, you know, they aren't looking in each other's windows, but again, whatever you decide would be, I was gonna request a triple-double window, but I think that would probably be too much, or just a glass wall down the whole right elevation if we're gonna keep pushing that, but that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Sean, you got anything? Just the last, last thing I'll ask about, I know there was a, there was a comment about the hours that you'd be doing construction in the days. Is that handled through the Building Department, gonna handle that?
Yeah, there is, in the ordinance, there are specific hours that...
Right, you can't sign any earlier than 7:00 a.m., you gotta, but I know there was a question about that, not a question, but there was a comment about that. So, can you legally work, can a contractor legally work on a Saturday or Sunday in the City of Lowell?
I'm, I'm not certain of that.
So, I know it was brought up in the Planning Board meeting, I know you addressed it to Mr. Phelps.
We did, well, we, we would say to Mr. Phelps, so that we're not there disturbing him on the weekends, that we would work with him.
Yep, yep. I know you're gracious enough, give him your cellphone, you know?
I didn't do that yet.
I know you didn't, I heard it. Okay, no, I just wanted, I just wanted to ask the question, I don't think that's under our purview anyways, but, okay, so I believe we have just the one condition. Do you have that recorded?
Two.
Two?
Build from the plan that's submitted on March 3, and then on the condition, either two singles or two double windows.
So, the whole, okay, I'll, I'll ask the question. I know there's a lot of talk about the windows. Is that really for us, or is that gonna be handled under the, with the Planning Board?
Well, the Planning Board is gonna maintain a, like I said before, design review over this to make sure it conforms, and I know exactly what you were talking about with respect to windows on the side. It's, it is an issue that comes up, the side or a corner where it's, where a neighbor's looking at a blank wall or whatever, it's, it's, it's not a good design, it doesn't look good, so I'm sure that's something that they're gonna want to address, and, you know, we're offering that to you tonight, that we will address it, and certainly all the comments indicated they'd like that addressed.
Yeah, so, I don't, I'm not gonna have that as a condition for this board, I don't think it's necessarily, because I believe it's gonna be covered. You agree with what I'm getting at here?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
We don't need to pile on. Okay, so could I have a motion, please?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the matter before us, make a motion to approve ZB-2017-10. The petition is a variance, the applicant is Loon Hill Development, the property located 109 A Street. The petition, the applicant is seeking relief under Section 5.1 for minimum lot size, a minimum lot size per dwelling unit, and any relief that is required for construction of a single-family dwelling unit on a vacant lot. The property subject, the pro, the subject property located in the traditional single-family zoning district with the following condition, that they build from the plan that was submitted on March 3.
Good. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Bailey?
Approved with conditions.
Member Carron?
Approved.
Member Pack?
Approved with conditions.
Member Palia?
Approved with condition.
Member Callahan?
Approved with condition.
And Member McCarthy?
Approved with condition.
Okay, Mr. Theodore, been approved. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bailey.
Yep, thank you. Ramirez, property's located 205 Smith Street, petition, the applicant is seeking relief under Section 5.1 for usable open space, side yard setbacks, lot size and land area per dwelling unit to convert her single-family dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling unit. The subject property is located in traditional multifamily zoning district. So, we received communication that the petitioner did not meet the requirement of the posting of the abuttes, is it twenty days or twenty-one days?
Two weeks prior to the...
Two weeks prior. So, in the communication that came, that we received, the applicant has been informed of that, they've done, as far as you know, at this point, they've fulfilled that requirement, or they're in the process?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so they are to be continued to the March 27 meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so could I have a motion to continue to March 27?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the matter before us, I make a motion to continue to March 27.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Bailey?
Continue to March 27?
Member Carron?
Continue to March 27.
Member Pack?
Continue.
Member Palia?
Continue to March 27.
Member Callahan?
Continue to March 27.
Member McCarthy?
Continue to March 27.
Okay, next matter, business, business is other business minutes for the approval of February 27, 2017. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the matter before us, I make a motion to approve the minutes from 2/27/2017.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Bailey?
Approved.
Member Carron?
Approved and accept.
Member Pack?
Approved.
Member Palia?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approved.
Okay, any handouts for the March 27 meeting this evening?
Two handouts for two different petitions.
Okay, all right, any, anybody got anything? Everybody planning on being here the 27th? Yep, okay, good. All right, so I have a motion to adjourn?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
It's next.
It's almost...